All right, being that it's seven o'clock on September 24th, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakefield Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, I'm going to read into the record in accordance with the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 mobile coronavirus outbreak emergency. The September 24th, 2020 public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. For the record, is anyone besides LakeCam recording this meeting? With no response, I'm going to say that's a no. And briefly, I'm just going to do a quick attendance. And on my screen, I see Planning Board members Jack Lynch, just raise your hand, Jack, Michelle McEckern, Peter Conroy, Barbara Mankowski, myself, Mark Knox, and then we have our clerk Kathy Murray. And then presenting tonight, I have Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers. So at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Jamie. I think you're first on the agenda for A&R Plan at Two Cranberry Lane.
All right, good evening, Jamie Bissonette with Zenith Consulting Engineers. At the last meeting, we had presented a Form A plan and had discussed the fact that North Precinct Street, or the way that was adjacent to our property, is actually an undeveloped way. If it's okay with the Chair, I'd like to share my screen.
Go right ahead.
So as you can see, we've updated the plan. The plan now includes the North Precinct Street with the decree and number, also with the term undeveloped on it for this parcel here. I believe that that was what we needed to satisfy the requirements, you know, based off of our last meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
From what I recall, that was the only thing that was sort of an unknown. I don't think it was a big problem, other than just wanting to have that text on there. I have one question, Jamie. So is this a unique circumstance that something like this come up?
As far as the roadway?
Yeah, that being undeveloped, and then it's kind of like the way that it hits. So it's Lot 2, the frontage is a, I guess, a unique situation now. Because I'm going to say that technically some of that frontage, at least on your plan, shows off of the undeveloped roadway. But the reality is their frontage is on true North Precinct Street.
Well, you know what, that is a good question. I believe that that is the case. I really didn't analyze the frontage for Lot 2, as we weren't taking any off of this area in here. We were grabbing some land in the back here. This is pretty, not completely unusual, but it is relatively unusual to see an undeveloped road in Lakeville like this. But it does happen from time to time. So I believe, I believe like, you know, there's parts of like old Main Street and some other roads in town which this does happen, paper roads. But, you know, in cities like New Bedford, there's hundreds, or at least dozens and dozens of them. But Lakeville doesn't seem to have too many of them.
Okay, does, do any other board members have any comments?
I have a question.
Thank you, Michelle.
In regards to the paper street, is that something that needs to be addressed with the Registry of Deeds at all, or we just leave it as is?
Well, you know, that would probably be a better question for an attorney. Paper streets or undeveloped right of ways, whatever the term is for that road, we have it listed as a layout that's undeveloped. It really, it can depend on who has rights to it, who actually owns it. It can be very complicated or very simple. This looks like it, there was a decree where it was taken, taken in 1961, it appears. So I don't know, I don't know the process to undo a roadway like this. And I'm not sure of the advantage of doing that one way or another. I do know you can file to have roads, I believe it's discontinued. I believe that's the proper term, if they haven't been built. And then I believe the abutters on both sides own to the center line of the road in most of those cases. But again, those would probably be better, better questions for an attorney who specializes in this.
Hey Jamie, I've got one question. We now have two North Precinct Streets.
I don't think now, I think you've, we've always had the constructed one and the one that was not developed. This, this isn't, to us, this isn't necessarily new. The one that's not constructed just for this portion in here was, was taken for layout purposes in 61. This over in here is a public way that's already been accepted by the town one way or another. So the town should be very aware. I'm sure the DPW and, and like are very aware of the situation.
Okay.
Hi Jamie, this is Barbara.
Hi Barbara.
Oh, good, you can hear me, hi. So I'm very familiar with this neighborhood and with this particular street. And when I go into taking the right-hand turn from North Precinct over to Cranberry Lane, it looks to me like the area that I would otherwise be driving on a road is now being positioned as a portion of this lot. The drain adjustment goes over that location and that tip of that property does go into what is today the existing municipal or town-accepted street, North Precinct Street, as it currently exists.
Okay.
Are we concerned about that at all in terms of, you know, just having clean books? Because these people are, the people that buy this house are going to own a property that actually the parcel goes out into the public way.
I'm not sure what you mean with the parcel goes into the public way.
I wish I could show you. So you see where North Precinct Street meets up with the paper Precinct Street?
Yes. Yep.
And when you are riding along this road and you go to take a right into Cranberry Lane,
Yep.
You know, you're not really going up and around like that hard turn. I think the way the road truthfully exists is it kind of smoothes over this location. I think this corner.
You think, you think it goes over this corner in here?
I do, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, it would have been surveyed, correct?
Well, this, this is definitely the result of a survey. Yeah, there's no question that this is the result. There's actually a concrete bound right at the corner here that they're tied into along with Plymouth County bounds up in here and, and bounds in other positions as well. So I guess if they, they could possibly be driving over this bound in here, you know, not likely, but you could, it could be. I don't think there's really, there's really much to do. Either the town does a taking for the roadway, you know, or they, if it's going over the property, or they relocate it. But as of right now, it kind of is what it is.
I'd like to put it to the board about how we can articulate mitigating some risk to the town, because we're certainly not going to be redrawing roads if it goes over somebody's property. But we're creating a new lot here, right? And that lot, as it currently exists, looks like it pokes right out into the existing North Precinct Street.
So I'm going to briefly speak to that and then you certainly correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, but
Sure.
Banks and attorneys would pick right up on that. When a survey happened, if the road was going across the lot and something would be said at the transfer of papers.
What one would hope, I mean, the situation is, is that with this kind of a filing where it's an approval not required, the standard, the standard that this plan has beats, you know, that we're, we're on a roadway, we have frontage and we have area. Whether the town has gone over and paved onto this, this particular lot should have no bearing as to whether it would be endorsed or not, or not endorsed. You know, it's, it's, but I can't speak to whether or not they, they have paved over it or not. I haven't, I don't have the pavement edge located on my survey here.
That's the question, is that pavement edge on the survey?
Yeah, Jimmy, I think, you know, this is Jack. I would agree with Barbara that, you know, the, if the homeowner is going to say, wait a minute, you've taken off a piece of my property by putting a road there.
Yeah, but that's the thing is that they, the town right now has a right of way. And if they fall outside of the right of way, and you have the two options, which is either move the right of way, move the pavement, or take, take, do a taking of land.
So the homeowner would know in advance that the town has a right of way to take that piece of their property? And they would, they would have to agree to that upfront, right?
I can't speak to who, who tells the person that could be buying it, anything along those lines. You know, I'm just the engineer presenting this plan, the person that owns the property. If they know of any type of issues with any lot, I believe they're supposed to disclose it. But again, we don't have the pavement edge on here. So I'm not sure that there is an issue or that there isn't.
And to that point, let me be clear. But what Mr. Bissonette said previously, this is an A&R plan, not a subdivision. So that roadway line is not something that we're concerned with. That is not part of an A&R approval. Edge of road is not under our purview for that.
Okay.
It's frontage and just, and to that point, Jamie, how much frontage is on that lot?
There's over 200 feet.
And so if a piece went missing, there'd still be ample frontage?
Yes.
If, if with that, that issue was something that the town took it, there'd be ample space for, for them to meet the frontage requirements?
Yep, yeah, I, I don't disagree. I do understand Barbara's concern, but, but I think with an A&R plan, it's, it's technically not relevant.
Outside of that, is, does anyone else have any other points or questions that they would like to bring up?
Mark, I have a question. So, so, so no one's verified that concrete bond? That's almost like at the very point right there, Jamie, yeah, that one.
Oh yeah, no, we, we have field, our surveyors have field located all these bounds in here, absolutely.
So it's verified and it's not in a road? Or would it be marked that it was out into Lakeville's roadway?
Yeah, I, I, they have not told me one way or another. I mean, I would expect it to be out of a roadway, but
Yeah.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't told me whether it fell within or not.
I mean, my, my issue with this is that the way this is drawn, it put, it puts more emphasis on North Precinct Street, the undeveloped layout, than it does the actual public way in that, in that section right there. And, you know, I know that you're vouching that it's correct and that's, that's good enough for me, but I, I think it's a problem because of the way it's drawn personally. But I understand about the A&R, so. If I was buying that house and I was standing at that corner, I would want this cleared up personally. I would want it redrawn and, and resubmitted.
And when you say redrawn, I'm, I'm not following, I apologize.
Well, the, the line that shows North Precinct Street undeveloped looks like the primary way. Even, I understand the wordings there, but instead have the public way be the way and the dotted lines go the opposite way, you know?
Public way be the, so you're saying we should have this open and have a line across this way?
It would make more sense, I think, but, you know?
I think the reason that it's cut this way is because the original decree from 61 follows this path all the way up and down.
Right.
And that's why, that's why, and I believe that this over in here was something that was put into effect after.
Probably to avoid the wetlands?
I, I don't know, it could have been, it could have been just constructed incorrectly. I'm not really sure. We do find this from time to time where roads get shifted for one reason or another. And I don't know what the reason is.
Isn't this an issue that should be handled and discussed and resolved with the real estate agents rather than with us? I mean, you know, they, you know, it's, the real estate agent knows, the attorney rather knows, would know that, you know, that a piece of the, of the buyer's land is being taken by, by the town. And they should know that and agree to it, or then take whatever actions necessary.
Nobody's taken any land, nobody's taken any land. That was just a hypothetical situation we put out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I sort of agree with Peter that, and I understand Jamie's point too, that the original layout of the road that's undeveloped is the layout of record. And the actual North Precinct that loops out and around being a physical way was something that's added on afterwards. So it kind of lends you to putting the lines the way you did, Jamie?
Yeah, if I can, I'd like to share one more screen with you guys. Hopefully this will provide a little bit of clarity. All right, so this is a plan from the Registry of Deeds. And this shows why we, we had, why we did the layout, I believe, the way that we did. The existing gravel way back according to the surveyor's plan, looks like 1987, shows the existing gravel road coming down and then bearing off over this way, where we have North Precinct Street continuing down this way undeveloped. And so it appears that maybe while they had the layout here, they might have just improved the existing gravel way around. But this is, this is the plan, the layout plan, the registry plan, which was endorsed by the Planning Board in 1987.
For the subdivision of Cranberry?
Exactly, yep.
I actually like this better, believe it or not, Jamie. It, it makes more sense, like almost attaching this with everything. I think if you had this, I would attach it because, you know, the way that this is shown, undeveloped and the existing gravel, it has more, it has more area at the top of the lot, you know, that you can see how they probably turned, you know?
Well, the problem is, is that I'm guessing that they've improved this from gravel to paved. Am I right, Barbara?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, so I, we don't have the limits of the paved, but as you can see with the bound location here and the other locations, it appears that the gravel way, they would have to have extended it a lot to be over this corner. But does this kind of sweep up like this when you get to this point, Barbara?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the map on, I just went up to like Google Maps.
Sure.
And this look, and I think it's exactly what you said. I think that the road changed since the time that these plans were put into place.
Yep.
Because the place where the split is for the paper road is further down. It doesn't actually, it's not actually adjacent with this parcel. It looks like it's much further down.
Yep.
And the roadway here goes from North Precinct. It's a right-hand turn onto Cranberry with no, no reference to a paper road. So it's likely it's a non-issue, but it's just a, you know, it's just the plans.
I'm looking at it as well, yeah, I can see, I can see exactly, I think, what you're saying there. Okay, yeah, I, I agree. Looking at this, I don't think it's going to be an issue either.
Yeah.
So does that satisfy everybody's?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sold.
I'm fine.
Yep, all right, so I'd like to make a motion to endorse the revised A&R Plan for Cranberry Lane.
Second, I second.
Do I have a motion in the second? All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. So motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is an A&R Plan for Evergreen, Clark Road and Spruce Street. Jamie, are you here to represent that as well?
I am, and I believe Attorney Mather is here with us. And he, he handled the, the case with the ZBA. Am I correct, Attorney Mather?
You can see him there.
Correct.
For the record, show that Attorney Mather is present for the minutes of meeting. Kathy? So Kathy was so good to put everything from the zoning board of appeals approval in our packet, but I'm going to just, if you would like to give us a brief synopsis of what went on there with where you are today with this plan, Mr. Mather, I would appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Again, for your record, my name is Bob Mather. I'm a local attorney. And I represent the owner of the property, Lou Vermette and his wife, Amy. They came to me last year and they owned eight lots that they had purchased. And there were four houses on the eight lots. There basically were cottages kind of run down, dilapidated. And what they wanted to do is see if they could tear down the four houses and put up four new houses. Now, and they could not, what they had a right to do was to tear down the existing dwellings and, or rehab the dwellings where they are. The bylaw allows them to make them a little bit bigger. But they didn't want to do that because of the location of where they are. What, what you can't see on this, on the plan is, you can see the four new lots, but I don't believe you can see where the, where the existing houses were.
Okay, good, great, you've got that plan.
So if you look at the, the top portion of it, you can see that there are four dwellings, two in the lower left-hand corner, two in the upper right-hand corner. So they're even close together. Now, none of those houses sit on lots that comply with zoning. None of them meet all of the setback requirements. So the proposal was to reconfigure the eight lots into four lots and to place the, the homes, pretty, you can see they're pretty much centered in the middle, middle of the lots. So whereas before, none of these lots met all of the setback requirements, now all four of them meet all of the setback requirements. Now, they don't meet the area and frontage requirements, but that's why we had to go to the zoning board. So when we first had the proposal, because this was a little bit of a unique project, I sat down with Nate Darling to determine what the proper relief would be. And what we came up with was that because these four dwellings are all pre-existing non-conforming uses and they're allowed to stay, and what we're proposing is to alter that. The bylaw, the zoning bylaw provides that pre-existing non-conforming uses may continue, but any alteration or change can only be done if the zoning board makes a finding that the change will not be substantially more detrimental. Now, what I believe is also in your packet, Nate ran that by your town council and asked if town council felt that it was appropriate for the zoning board to issue either a special permit or a variance. Now, obviously, we were hoping that the response would be special permit because the variance is much more difficult to obtain. What you can't see, but I believe Nate has probably confirmed to you, and I did confirm it with him today, that the response of town council was, yes, a special permit would be appropriate. So we went to the zoning board. It was actually a pretty easy job with the zoning board to show that what we were proposing was, and actually remember, as I mentioned, all we had to prove is that the alteration will not be substantially more detrimental. In other words, could be a little more detrimental, as long as it's not substantially. But what we were to show that not only was it not substantially more detrimental, it was significantly less detrimental, because we were spacing houses out better, they're on larger lots, and they now all comply, comply with the setback requirements. So the zoning board gave us the special permit. But that was really only the first stage of the process, because we have to do a Form A plan. Now, we couldn't have come to the planning board first, because if we did, you would have had no choice but to deny this, because we would have been asking for a division that does not comply with, with zoning as the frontage and, and area. But with the special permit, it allows us to appear before your board, because now we do have four lots that have been approved by the zoning board for a special permit. Little bit of a long story, but it's a, it is a, a little bit of a confusing situation. And I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So I just want to read from, we, we also have the finding in our packet that the zoning board of appeals had provided after their hearing. And I just want to read three items from it. Item L, the zoning board of appeals finds that the proposed changes to the properties and structures are not substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming structures or uses, and is in fact a significant improvement to the immediate neighborhood and community, and a significant improvement to the non-conformities of the present uses of structures. And then they skip down to N. The zoning board of appeals finds that the advantages of the proposed changes outweigh any detrimental effects, and such detrimental effects on the neighborhood and environment would not be greater than could be expected from the development, which could occur if the special permit was denied. And then finally, O, the zoning board of appeals finds that the applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. And that's the end of their finding. But I thought those three things were important as far as their decision-making process. If anybody else has any questions or comments from the planning board, I'd like to hear from you. Barbara?
Mark, hi Bob. I'm just curious, just as a point of information, a portion of these lots is coming from Elm Street, which is, I believe, a private way. And I just want to check with you on that usage and incorporating that portion of the street with the two parcels indicated on the far right side.
Okay, I, I believe what Barbara is pointing out is that Elm Street, as it was laid out in the original plan, which I can't remember, 70, 80, 80 years ago, showed a paper street that actually protruded into these, what'll be the new four lots. But it stopped right in the middle. It, it very significantly did not go out to Evergreen Road. Lou owns these, owns the entire fee interest of Elm Street, because he owns land on both sides. That's due to Massachusetts statute, called the Derelict Fee Statute. So it says that if you own land on a private way, you own to the middle of the way. Or if you own on both sides, you own the entire way. That having been said, you also have to look at whether or not there are any rights to use the way, because you can own an entire private way, but subject to the rights of others to use. But because it doesn't go anywhere, in other words, it stops dead in the middle of Lou's property, there's no one else that would have a right to, to use it. Ran this by Nate, again, he agreed. It is, it's sort of a title issue, but there is an answer, an answer to the, to the issue. The only issue would be as if a buyer said, well, I'm worried about someone else having the right to use that, to come into the middle of my lot. We're very comfortable that they can't say that, because it goes nowhere. Again, we'd have a big problem if it continued on through Evergreen, up to Evergreen Road. Does that answer your question, Barbara?
It does, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Now, I know that some of the houses in that area, they're seasonal and some are year-round. Were the Um, now, I know that some of the houses in that area, they're seasonal and some are year-round. Were the existing houses seasonal?
The last time they were, were used, they were used year-round. But they, to be honest with you, they haven't been used for a while. But they were used. Oh, I'm not really sure. Um, Lou Vermette was going to be here tonight, but he's actually in the hospital. He went in for, uh, some surgery. Jamie, do you know, have you been out there to see what they look like? I'm guessing?
No, sir.
Five, ten years? Something like that.
I actually think, Bob, these are gonna be a huge improvement, um, based on what I've seen down there over the past twenty years. I, I think creating this will be helpful.
No question about it. I mean, Lou out there, they, they should elect him mayor of the, uh, development because he's been a one-man redevelopment, um, because he's done several other houses where he took that down, god-awful-looking houses and put up nice, brand-new, um, houses. So he's, um, he's done nothing but added to the value. And, and obviously, we had no opposition, um, from, uh, no one should, no one came to oppose at the zoning board. No one even came to comment.
So Michelle, did that, did you fully get your question out as far as the, uh, previous use and the, the term that they're vacant?
Yeah, um, I guess, I mean, just one thing I wanted to point out was just that, you know, if, if they chose to, they could have a fully conforming lot, but apparently they're looking to stay with the four individuals.
With one house, yeah. Um, Michelle, there was one thing that, um, uh, I, I did want to point out is that, um, in our bylaw, um, you mentioned that they haven't been used for a few years, okay? If this was a commercial use, we'd have an issue because commercial uses that have not been used for more than two years, you lose your non-conforming rights. But our bylaw specifically deals with residential uses in a different way. In other words, it says if they are abandoned. Now, abandoned doesn't mean nobody lives in it. Abandoned means you've taken it down, uh, and it's no longer, um, and no longer used as a house. So even though they haven't been used for five or even ten years, they still have the same rights as it, as a non-conforming use in accordance with our bylaws.
And Bob, to, to go off that, when you say a, a business property or a commercial property that didn't operate for two years or more, you're talking about when it's grandfathered in outside of a business zone?
That, that's correct. If, if it's there because it's a non-conforming use. Of course, we have a lot of those.
But if it was by right zoning?
If it was by right, of course, you could leave it vacant forever.
Only when the zoning is misused and grandfathered, that then that would become an issue with the, the, the vacating the property for the term.
That's correct because the, there's, uh, there's been multiple cases on it, but there is a huge difference between not used and abandoned. Not used just means if it, i- i- if it's empty for two years, it loses its non-conforming rights. Abandoned means you have to do something specific with intent that it's not going to be used again, as in this case, in the dwelling.
Very good. So does anybody else have anything? Being that there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for Spruce Street, Evergreen, and Clark Roads.
I'll second that.
I'll second, yeah.
Sorry.
All right, I have a motion, and I think Peter got there first, so Peter seconded. Uh, roll call, vote. Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jack?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have master plan implementation and update on hiring a planner. So I'm probably gonna touch on two separate things in this discussion, but earlier in the week, I met with, uh, Nathan Darling, uh, Selectman Rich LaCamera, and we met in, uh, the town administrator, Maureen Candido's office. Uh, we were in, originally intend on discussing forty-three D, uh, the, the process with that and the hospital property, but we also touched on planner. From that meeting, um, under advisement, I explored with environmental partners, a gentleman, Scott Turner, that's right now our point of contact for the forty-three D and the hospital property, regarding the, uh, environmental partners offering planner services for the planning board. And this was directed based on the understanding that a town like Free Town uses environmental partners a great deal, for some capacity of planner, uh, or their planning board service. So Scott explained that, uh, contracting them for a full-time planner, uh, was a unique and non-typical request, uh, very difficult to put a, a budget value on. But he explained the services that environmental partners does provide for Free Town, uh, and other towns in the community, or in this part of the state. After finding out, uh, that we have a secretary to handle such things as postings, uh, posting of meetings, agendas, minutes, and other duties in-house. That kind of backed him off of even the requirements of us needing full planner services. But to more of what Free Town gets, that, uh, they would provide technical review for all plans. They can give us administrative assistance, uh, with things like drafting a finding, uh, proper forms and timelines for filing things. So I'm gonna explore that further. I do need to follow up with him because there are several sites in town that it wasn't a part of the first discussion with him or the emails, but uh, disciplines that they need to, uh, close out peer reviews for existing projects such as Riverside Commercial Drive, fifty-seven Long Point Road, or even, uh, recently we approved Bellaway and Pauline's Path. And I don't know that we have, well, we certainly don't have anybody on board to go out and make sure that the drainage was right on either of those two subdivisions. Uh, and there are similar disciplines within Riverside Commercial Drive and fifty-seven Long Point Road that will need those same services. So at this point, th- this is more of an update, but wanted to let you know that that conversation's been started, and hopefully, we can come up with some sort of an agreement and terms that they can provide us with a lot more help to, uh, and I hope you, you heard some of that, Kathy, that they can really help out with the administrative stuff. If nothing else, to make a template that, you know, maybe it wouldn't be hand-holding forever, but just to get us in the right direction. So I think it was good, but like I say, I need to follow up with the closing out of projects, and we, we're gonna see if they can develop some sort of a budget. And there are some moving parts, and it's a moving target with the costs because some of this, I think, would fall under peer review. But, uh, for example, the administrative assistance would fall under town budget. So that's something that I need to get numbers from them to go back to Nate and the board of selectmen to present that and hopefully get approval for what we need. So that's all I have for my update on a planner regarding the master plan implementation. Does anybody have any questions? Or any information that I would go back to for other, uh, guidance and oversight?
Mark, did they mention how, like, Free Town pays them? Is it hourly? Do they buy a bank of time, or?
So he did mention. And I'm, I, um, it was a lengthy conversation, and I may have misremembered exactly which one he was talking about, but sometimes they would come up with a budget annually, or sometimes the town just knows the budget that it's gonna cost annually. Uh, but I want to say with Free Town, like, I think we're all under the impression a, a, a plan would be provided from an applicant or an engineer, we would just send it right to them. And with that, when we get the plan, we would say we need stormwater management review. If it was site plan review and we wanted some noise and, uh, visual buffers between residential and commercial properties, or whatever here oversight we want, we need to send that along with the plan. They would develop a price, and they wouldn't do anything until a check came. So I believe that's at the point where we say it's back to the developer. We put your plan out for peer review. This is the cost. If you want us to move forward with the approval process, we need a check for this much. And then it gets sent to environmental partners to do that work.
That seems fair. Fair for both parties, really.
Yeah.
Very fair for the contractor. I mean, there's no town markup. Uh, i- i- it, it, it is one bill and that's it, you know?
Correct. Um, and something else, uh, Kathy, for the next meeting, I'm wondering if you could put in our packet the the list of the costs that we charge an applicant for, like, a major site plan review or a minor site plan review, all those items that we, uh, built, basically bill out. Because if some of these costs of the administrative portion of them helping us is on the town, we kind of want to look at those and at least know what they are. We may not have an answer at the next meeting, but I'd like to be able to discuss it. So if they come back with a plan and they say, "Peer review is this much, but the administrative help and writing a finding is this much", we want to be able to adjust those costs as needed so that we're not creating a, a deficit for the town. I think that our application process also should help to cover that. So I hope you all agree with that, but I, I'd like that as discussion.
Agreed. Hey, Mark?
Yes.
I just want to let you know, um, I sent over a consultant referral to Maureen, um, and I forwarded you a copy of that as well. So if you need an alternative resource, it may be, I, I have no investment on who we choose to work with, but it is a second resource for you.
Excellent. And I, and I think as part of the discussion that we had on Monday, we were hoping that the board of selectmen would put together a request for qualification and put it out to maybe select engineers, but several, and get them qualified. So maybe we have a list of
Like it.
Three to ten, but whatever it is that, you know?
Yep, that's the way to go.
Whereas if we always use the same company, that it's the company in our back pocket. And so the, a list of options that we were pre-approved to say, "Any one of these folks on this list, if, uh, an applicant said, 'I don't like working with that guy, could I have somebody else on the list?'" For example, whatever reason. Or maybe
Excellent.
Or maybe they'd say, "We'd like at least two prices", and so we could put it to do different
Yeah.
forms. So that hopefully is, is in the works and it, you know, it doesn't get lost. This, there's a lot going on right now in town, but. But I'm gonna say that that's it for master plan implementation, item number four, and number five is the development opportunities district update. So I did have a conversation with Nate Darling about this. We need to be cautious. We probably want to have somebody review that for our guidance, but if we had tried to eliminate the development opportunities district, that could harm the town's opportunity at some commercial or business development that people don't realize. That's a huge help for the town, not putting one-point-five kids per household in the school system. You know, as much as residential neighborhoods are nice, it does add a lot of traffic and it, it does create, uh, a budget deficit for the town when the kids go into the school system. So we do want to be cautious about trying to limit commercial development. That being said, I mean, it, um, maybe the question to ask council because the way that that bylaw is drafted, it seems very scary that something could go just about anywhere. But we do have the ability to deny a project for being detrimental to a neighborhood or too detrimental to a neighborhood. So it's something, I guess, we need to keep that in mind, too, and find out maybe what those developments are in advance. So just before a project comes down the pipeline, we don't want to be caught without knowing all of our options.
Zinc, remember, um, had, used to have this group of friends that he would email, uh, questions about this, two other town planners. I'll have to look up the email because I know he gave it to me. But there's a group of them that will talk about their different, uh, challenges. And I would be very interested to see if there's been court cases challenging the ruling of a planning board to say it's too detrimental to a neighborhood because that feels fairly subjective. It would be good information to have.
Arbitrary and capricious.
Yep.
The term they would use. So
Yep.
Yeah, no, that's, and that's part of, we need to, I mean, if we have, environmental partners can help with writing a finding, we need to kind of figure that out. I need to sign up to take a course on writing a finding, but, uh, that would be something reviewed by council anyway. It would have to be clearly called out in the finding what the detriment was and proved. It just can't say, "'Cause we don't like it." So we do have to back it with fact in order to, for it to hold up in court. Uh, and something else I was told, too, was when something does go to court, the courts will first go to our bylaws. They are somewhat lenient, I'm told, with us interpreting our own bylaws, not somebody else.
I heard the same thing.
We still need to interpret them properly, but.
It needs to be in the bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's all I have for development opportunities. If anybody else would like to mention anything on that before we move on. Michelle?
Um, so now, what if, like, in the master plan, it talks about, uh, designating certain areas for development? Is that something that, rather than be all over the whole entire town, that it's allowed in certain areas? Then would that kind of protect us, like, an extra layer than, other than just having, you know, it'll be detrimental to that area? I know it does seem like it's difficult to get that denial.
So that's, it's a great question, and I'm not, I don't have a great answer for you, but I know I've asked a similar question, and the response is, "Well, you can't cluster zone." But, so I don't understand what that means because if you look at our zoning map, it's all clusters. There, it's, it's, I mean, it's not an individual parcel, but there are strips that are business-owned, and they're intentionally put along main roads. And then there are some little pockets that are business-owned because they were grandfathered in from the fifties when there was a store there, or whatever. So I, I guess, to your point, Michelle, maybe we have to find out the difference between cluster zoning and zoning. Not to oversimplify, but, you know, so if we could actually amend that bylaw, if, I, I felt like if you focused the development opportunities district to have some sort of a connection within so many feet of certain roads being, call them main roads, not secondary roads and private ways and backroads, uh, because that would create the detriment anyway, in my eyes. You know, if you said within so many miles of Route one forty, uh, along Route seventy-nine, uh, Route one oh five, Route eighteen, I, that was, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, 'cause, you know, I was just going to say, cause you know, we have the one distribution center coming in. And if we're, if we were to turn down another one saying, you know, this is going to be detrimental to this area, wouldn't they look at the distribution center coming in and say, well, this was allowed. Why are you going to deny this one? So I just
Yeah, you, you definitely need a specific point to make that it was more detrimental to a certain community, which and I, I don't want to talk and speculate, but speculate about any specific projects right now. But just say for an example, using against the hospital property, which is right on Main Street versus um something off of a side street off of Lakeside Ave. It, it was the, the same type of warehouse distribution type of use. I could argue that it's that community that you're burdening that's not on a main road. But so that the traffic impacts your community specific to the location. And, and that's my thought and I certainly don't know that that would hold up in court and that's something that we need to ask, but and that's why I say like the zoning thing, what's the difference between cluster zoning and zoning? And so all tiny little semantic differences.
Isn't one of the concerns how it impacts the infrastructure of the town is regarding traffic, water, sewage? These different?
There, there is a component to that, that if the town just absolutely can't handle a project like this, to say they wanted to put a casino in town.
Right.
And you'd be talking about high-rise hotel buildings and and again, I'm not saying a casino is coming to town for anybody that's watching. Yeah. Pathetically, as an example, that would be a huge thing or an airport or something that yeah, I mean, I do believe that we would have the right to turn down something that absolutely overburdened the town that we could not handle it on an infrastructure level.
Okay.
So, anybody else? Forty-three D is item number six. Discuss peer review items, which I think Kathy included a list Michelle put together of some things that we would want covered by a peer review. Does everybody have that? Item number six in your packet? So this is a good start. I think uh when we delve into that project, that's something that we will pass something like this along to that peer review engineer firm uh, to voice all of our concerns. But I think I'd like everybody to take a look at this. I don't know if anybody had a lot of time to look at it and maybe put this on the agenda for the next meeting, Kathy, if anybody wants to come back and add anything to this or elaborate.
So my, my only piece of feedback so far, um, and maybe after I look at it or think about it for more time, maybe I'll have more feedback, but um, I just had occasion to speak with a buyer who was looking at a property that abuts the hospital site. And the truth is, is that there's going to be a several, several residential properties, several residential buyers that are going to be right up against that development. We have to have some buffer, some vegetative borders. I think, um, if I recollect, it was a hundred, was it a hundred feet of vegetative border?
Michelle, do you watch the meeting? No?
Yes.
So they a presentation. I actually have the packet in front of me.
Yeah.
They had a project schedule.
They did say a hundred veg, a hundred foot vegetative buffer. They did say that.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that's included if we do peer review, that that, the quality of that vegetative buffer.
That's something that I, I've clearly stated that we would need that.
Okay.
In all residential properties, not just the ones to the left of the hospital property. So this is what they had in their packet.
Yep.
Um, showing a berm and they actually called out for some plantings on it. But I specifically asked that it would be planted with trees rather than just a, a metal flower mix. Just because you look at the height of a tractor trailer compared to the trees. An elevation that's uh, beyond that, that's higher, it doesn't really do much. It, it is certainly something that's been considered and talked about at the first meeting. It was just an informational meeting. So yeah, that's Barbara, that is definitely high on the priority list. And some of the abutters, I'm under the impression, or at least one is asking for concrete barriers. So that's something that we would go to the peer review engineer. So
Excellent. Yeah.
That was addressed to one of the presenters. And they spoke to that if it's more than a hundred feet, typically concrete's not necessary. And if it's less than a hundred feet, concrete was more suitable. Uh, which I don't think a big concrete noise barrier is
No.
at all, but to, to my point, that's when we ask a peer review engineer. What's going to work the best and what's one's going to be, you know, suit the needs of the project?
I would even get into the quality of the plantings if we, I mean, we can get that granular.
That berm didn't seem to be very significant. I mean, that was, I mean, I, you know, doesn't seem to provide much protection to the, the residents on the other side.
Right. So that's why I suggested evergreen trees and that's why we would need to take some sort of a bond for a couple of years to make sure that the trees took.
Right. And the berm, the berm or whatever should be much longer than that. That, that seemed to be of no value at all.
Yeah, wrong, Jack. That's, that's a cross section of the berm.
Okay.
It's the length of the property, a hundred feet wide.
Right.
It's from the parking lot to the edge of the property with the berm coming up and it's along the whole length of it.
All right, fine.
The other thing, Mark, too, eh, I'm not against one thing or the other, but if, if they were to push for a concrete barrier, um, they might, they might agree to it and then say, yeah, but now we're going to bring trucks right to the other side of it. Do you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Let me just, I, I don't want to
So I guess
This isn't the public hearing for that. And I just, like I say, I'm trying to give an update, but I don't want this to be our hash it out meeting and we didn't call a public hearing on the stipulations of that project. And we haven't even seen real plans. So I just, I, I don't want to go too far into the specifics of each one, but like I said, just giving you an update. Um, so we did address the, the berm. We talked about the traffic impacts. They had a pretty low traffic count. Uh, because right now they're proposing warehouse, not distribution. So my concern was, and we always, this always comes up. And it's come up for years on different properties is
Traffic.
What if 10 years from now, that company is no longer there and a new company comes in that does run little vans out of there instead of warehouse, they do distribution. And then that changes everything. So we need to condition this project to protect us for change of occupancy, not change of use, because change of use would mean anything anything that's not specifically covered in the development opportunities district. And if you look at that, they could change it to a hotel and we have nothing to say about it.
Isn't the, isn't there a significant amount of traffic, truck traffic coming into a warehouse itself? Oh, forget the distribution, but just a, what a warehouse, wouldn't there be a
They had specific traffic counts and that's something that we'll have to put to a peer review engineer and they'll verify.
Right.
Because again, we, I don't think we want to fully trust the figures of an applicant without having it verified by our engineer.
Right.
So yes, uh, definitely under consideration when we do look at that. So basically what I want you guys to all do now is take this item number six piece out of the packet, read it over, over the next week or two and just jot down any other things on it that you think outside of that berm for visual and noise, privacy. And again, if there's something on here and you just specifically want to talk about an item, what I would like to do is be ready to present to the peer review engineer the list of uh disciplines that we want covered in depth. And then we also need to, once the hearing starts, we need to consider some of the bonds and sureties that we're going to take and also things like, uh, Michelle, the last thing you have ADA compliance, their parking to be sufficient. We may have to look at uh, density bonus. I think they're really close to or above 50% coverage on the, the
What happened?
Frozen up.
Mark, are you still there? Mark's mic is open and his video's still working, but we cannot see or hear him. Do we want to wait for him to uh, rejoin, obviously? Can?
Yeah, I'd like to uh, just take a quick look at the chats. So we have several questions in here. Oh, there's only one question from Barbara Standish. What about the lights on at night and the noise? A distribution center is not a good fit in the old hospital property. Okay. Um, so I think that one's still up for more discussion, right? Warehouse isn't much better. What about employee traffic? Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, one of my big questions for this is we're, we've got to have some sort of intersection there at Bridge Street. It's already a terrible, terrible, terrible intersection. So I'm sure that Mark will comment on that as well, um, from his meeting.
There's no residential housing right there, is there Barbara? I don't believe.
There is uh intermittent residential housing along Main Street, which is Route 105.
Right.
But Bridge Street is where the Walgreens is.
Right.
And there is a Cranberry, um, uh, Ocean Spray has a distribution center back there.
Yes.
So there's a lot of truck traffic.
Right.
Um, moving in and out of that location and there's no light there. So it becomes a really difficult location for people to navigate. Is Mark back on yet?
I am.
Oh, good. So Mark, we were talking about, uh, we picked up in the chat, there was comments from Mrs. Standish concerning uh, traffic and light usage at forty-three D. And I suggested that that's something that's coming more later on in the process. But certainly we would be concerned about having a traffic exchange there. Did you guys discuss any of that?
Uh, no, it's way too early.
Yeah.
Like I said, they don't even have a real plan. They're just giving us all their early numbers. So I just, we want to be ready for it. That, that's something we just want to jot down to make sure that we have traffic covered, which um, we do have right there. Second on the list is traffic study.
Yep.
Distribution versus warehouse, follow-up after six months yearly. Heavy truck flow effects. We talked about entrances and exits and which driveways would be functioning for that, uh, traffic light possibility. So they're all things that have, have been thought of and and or are on our list. So
Thanks for your question, Barbara.
So if there's nothing else, want to move on to the next item on the agenda?
Sorry, may I ask just one thing?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Just because I, um, you were in the middle of saying something in regards to your meeting with them. And I thought of it when you were saying it and I don't know where you were going exactly because you got bumped off, but they had said that there is a land bank of 155 employee parking and truck storage to build if necessary, but limit if possible. And so I didn't know if the presentation they presented with the 556 employee parking spots included that or was that excluding it? So I was just curious. I didn't
That's a great point to uh the lot coverage.
But was it already included or not?
Correct. No, that's, and that's my point is if it wasn't included, if they don't show it, but they're factoring, we need to know if that's put towards the lot coverage percentage because if they're saving it for future use and we approve it, we don't get to go back and we've missed the second density bonus if it went up to the 60%. So that's something we certainly want to keep an eye on and understand fully. Uh, that so, so-called banked lot coverage. So, good catch. So next on the agenda is Serphead.
Hi guys. So we had a meeting, uh, we, we did not have a meeting in August. We did have a meeting last night with respect to Serphead. Um, out of all the things that we covered, I think most meaningful to Lakeville is the update on the South Coast Rail. Uh, South Coast Rail update was completed. Um, I think there was a public hearing, a listening session. Um, but the, the interesting thing is that this completion date, the turn, you know, the estimated delivery date is going to be somewhere around 2023. So that hasn't changed in about a year. I think it, they're, they're continuing on with this project. Uh, the 140 exchange, which we's, if you were heading over, um, the intersection of 140 and 24, that exchange is being redrawn. Uh, the transfer station or the train station that's going to be available in uh Taunton is going to be where the old golf course, uh, golf learning center used to be. There used to be a big purple dinosaur over there. That's where uh, that train station is going to be going. So there's a lot of changes coming. Um, the bid was just approved for that work to start. So I would predict that we'll start to see that sometime in 2021. Substantial completion is estimated for 2023. So if anybody has questions on that, I mean, they can certainly visit uh, the South Coast Rail project to see updated maps. Phase one is that temporary location in between Taunton and Middleborough. Uh, we all know that the Lakeville train station is going to be moving over to Middleborough and the location from the Taunton over to Middleborough will be a temporary. The long-term full build will actually have a train that will come all the way down through Stoughton, through Easton, through Rainham, all the way into the center of Taunton. So it is important for people to be aware that that's going on. Estimated travel time is 90 minutes from Fall River and New Bedford into downtown South Station. Uh, other interesting stuff, we had a very interesting presenter last night. Her name was Zara Dowling. She's with the Clean Energy Center. Let me just look at my notes here. And she gave us a presentation on, um, it's a clean energy extension, excuse me. Uh, she gave us a presentation on solar development and I think there's a lot for us to be learning here. Um, her presentation is about an hour and a half long, but I will circulate the uh YouTube. If anybody in the public would like to read it, let me see where my other handout is here. You can Google on renewable, I don't have it handy. Okay, um, in any event, so she gave us an inter, very interesting presentation on solar. The uh smart program has been, is smart program has been modified for the state of Massachusetts. And what that means is that the incentives are changing and the rules are changing. So the incentives are going to put a lot of pressure on communities like ours. Uh, the one question I didn't have answered was the impact on municipal, where we have municipal utility service, whether we would be subjected to the same sorts of um, changes as they will. Uh, the main thing I want you to take away from this conversation is the fact that they're going to be proposing a um sample bylaw uh, for us, for our consideration. And we may have something in the next 30 days. We may have something closer to the end of the year, but a proposed uh bylaw for consideration will be provided to all of us for consideration. Parts of the state in the Western Mass are uh going through a lot more growing pains with this than we are, but suffice it to say, if these developers have these new incentives, we should expect uh, this stuff will be coming down here as well. And those are my big, big items from Serphead.
Barbara, educate me a little bit. What is this meeting you went to with Serphead? What is it?
Serphead is the Southeast Regional Economic Development and Planning Commission. Um, and actually I do have one more piece of information I should have left off of that. It is a regional planning um authority and basically what they do is they kind of bridge the gap for um, communities to get, you know, resources. It's kind of like a shared resources, I guess is a good way to put it. But you can look it up online, S R E P D D, I believe it is. Um, so one thing I did want to mention under the um, solar planning, which I, again, there were so many questions last night and it, we were running so late that we didn't have all of our questions answered. we were running so late that we didn't have all of our questions answered. But there are some resources for our fire department to receive training on avoiding damage from lithium batteries. And we definitely want to take advantage of that. I know our, our, our fire chief is extremely experienced and probably knows all about it. But if we can offer him something for his team, we definitely want to get out there and get that done. So that's on my list of follow-up and I'll forward that information when I get it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thanks, guys.
So, thank you, Barbara. Next item on the agenda is the minutes for Thursday, February 13th, 2020. Barbara and Peter.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Yep, I have reviewed.
Peter, you reviewed?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And Michelle and Jack have to abstain because you guys weren't present at that meeting. So, motion carries with a majority. Number nine on the agenda, Kathy, is old business. Do we have anything for old business? Because I don't see anything in the packet.
I don't have anything.
Okay, so now. Item 10, new business, we have to discuss the procedure for signed plans.
Can you hear me?
We can right now. Don't move anything.
All right, this is just something I wanted to ask how you felt about. Because it is a problem sometimes to get you guys in here and assign, you know, a multitude of plans. I know like after the Mylar is signed, could we have the engineer responsible to take the copies? And then I can distribute it instead of you having to sign five plans. I don't know how you feel about that.
I love it.
You're saying sign the Mylar? And then they'd make copies? I'm, I'm fine with, as long as that's legal and kosher, I'm fine with signing a Mylar.
Yeah, I mean, they've done it before. It's never been like the process, but they have done it in the past.
Is that something we could check with somebody outside or just as far as that being kosher with process? I know that once the Mylar is signed, they can make copies of that pretty easy.
Because even what I'd like to do now is get a PDF of the signed plan and have that saved. So that way, you know, plan gets lost or damaged or whatever, we'll always have it there of what was approved. Okay, I'll find out.
Okay. So I'm going to say that that was our action until you find out that that's totally legal and then we can make a motion to change that process.
All right, sounds good.
And then just discuss the site plan review application, which you included a copy of in our packet.
Yeah, I think I had been working on that. I'm not, I don't think that you had officially approved it. I think I, I think I want to say that Zinc was going to look for like kind of a checklist.
He had a checklist, yes.
I think that, so I, I just wanted to, before I kind of went into that second part, as long as this part was okay.
Has Nate seen this?
I think maybe, I think this was done like maybe in January or February. So I think he did see it back then.
Okay.
I would say let's, let's get him a copy just to make sure, circulate it between the board and him. Just for his thoughts, but I'm, I'm looking at that in saying. You've got applicant, owner, and contact. I guess the only other verbiage that I might want to see in there is sometimes people have somebody act as their agent. Like, for example, at the, if you do a curb cut on a state highway, the owner has to be responsible with their name on it, but they don't talk to the state highway department. They have an engineering firm be their agent. So, and oftentimes we see that where an engineer comes in and does the entire presentation. So I, I just. You have property owner, which would cover one block and then maybe on the name of the applicant, maybe have applicant slash agent of the own, you know, or representative, representative.
I, I'll look at, I'll look at some online too and see how other towns have done that.
And then I guess the only other thing, ob- obviously this is the form, not the plan. Should there be reference that a plan is included stamped by an engineer? Just so, I, I think. And again, if you find something different on how it's typically done, but I just, I would think that I'd like to see a line somewhere on there that references the plan and that the plan should be not, as Brian used to call them, a half-baked plan. Because we are kind of talking about, you know, requiring as-bilts and things like that.
So would that kind of go in on the checklist of the things that would be required? You know, must be stamped by an engineer, something like that?
Well, I'm just wondering if in the bottom box there, to be completed by planning board staff. And somewhere in there have a box that just says plan included and check the box yes or no, just to reference that a plan was submitted with the thing. That's all. I just, I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel as much as, I don't like the idea that a two-page document gets turned in and that's considered their application and we didn't get a plan. So I think it should have the acknowledgement that a plan was included with this.
Okay.
That's all.
Kathy, I'm sending a message over to my cousin to see if she can send me a sample of what they're using right now. And when I have that, I'll forward that.
We have a note in the chat back from Barbara Standish. Thank you for addressing my concerns. Keep me, keep in mind Ocean Spray traffic increases in the fall. So a fall traffic study would differ from one done any other time of the year. And I think no matter what, right now with COVID, any traffic study is going to be a little bit skewed from what it was a year ago and a year from now. So it's almost unfair test. I, I think more so, it's not doing a traffic study of the existing as much as the proposed and what it could be. And again, that's going to be done by the engineer to say, this is what the impacts of those tractor trailers and those employee vehicles coming and going at certain hours are going to do. And right now what they showed was that with the proposed use of a warehouse, they're saying it's less traffic than the CBS.
Not, not with 500 employees. I just find that hard to believe, but.
Right. So, and again, tho- those are things that we need the engineer on our side to vet. But that's something that, you know, highlight that on the, the list Michelle did, make sure that we include that, that we question the numbers in the packet that I got, which I can tell you. They actually had a page that they had written on the proposed traffic counts. And then we're going backwards in business here, so I don't want to delve too far, but. And I, I think your point about employees makes a big difference, but, so they've used some warehousing. I T E land use code 150. Well, this is the chart that they matched it up against other properties that are nearby there. Which I know it reads back.
You can't really see, yeah.
Yeah, this is Walgreens and they're saying that at these bottom numbers are totals, so 600 from the warehouse. And that's 1,500 from Walgreens, 2,700 from the convenience gas station, there's Seasons. And this one is McDonald's is another 2,200. So they're claiming that their traffic count is way lower, but you, you bring up a good point that if they bring 500 passenger vehicles in every morning and leave them in night, that's just out of the thousand trips. So they may be only doing a review to peer list. So Dick Scott had, has asked to add MIPA review to peer review list.
Good idea, yeah.
All right, so Kathy, item 10B, the application for site review, a couple of minor amendments to that and we'll have that along with the question answered about the signing of plans. You can vote on them then.
I actually had added like a few to my paper that you don't have. I could have. They're going to be renovating this office and I'm going to be working like more normal hours. But I wanted to ask like temporarily if I've been thinking maybe I will, would work one night so people could come in to sign plans. Is that something that would work for you?
Kathy, I don't want you to change your schedule for me. I just need to be hounded because I'm so busy that like if you need plans signed, just text me, call me until I get there.
Yeah, no, I'm not changing my schedule because I'm working every night right now. So. I mean, like keeping one of those nights. So that, and that would be like the designated night. So like I was thinking Mondays, like so if we had the meeting Thursday, everyone could come in Monday, the plan would be signed and done. So I, I don't know if that would work for you guys.
Monday night's good, also Tuesday.
So, but just an idea maybe to try to make it easier for people.
Are you still going to be there during some daytime hours?
Yeah, I'm in a regular daytime hours.
Okay. Well, sometimes I can be around either, but knowing that Monday night would work or Monday would probably be better for me because sometimes I have conservation on Tuesdays.
All right, so I'll see once that, by the end of the month, by the end of next month. That should come up and all right, my next question was next week, the attorney is going to be attending the zoning board meeting. And I was wondering when that meeting was done, can I ask her questions related to planning board? Just a little bit of that subdivision process and the paperwork. Kind of just to get a little bit more information because I know now all that's going to be coming up. Because the appeal period is going to be done and then it's going to be the covenant and those other documents. So just to kind of
I'm sorry. I, I was reading the comments in the chat and I got distracted. Could you?
Repeat that?
Yes, the beginning. I got the end of it. This is the beginning. I kind of zoned out on the comment, which I will mention in a second, but.
The attorney is going to be at the zoning board meeting on Thursday, so I just wanted to run through a few questions with her about the subdivision process, the paperwork, the covenant, and how that's all going to play out after the appeal period is over.
Absolutely. Do that, please.
Okay, awesome. And the last thing is where, as we're going to actually be using the peer review, I know that there was a process established. Do you want to take a look at that at the next meeting? To see if it, it still works. I know, I, I think I brought it up and it got a little contentious, I think. So maybe just to bring that back up again. What's, what's been established?
How long ago did that happen? I don't remember recent contention.
No, it was several months ago.
All right, that's fine. Please put it back on the agenda. I was just going to add something to that, but I want to mention, well, continue on Kathy, because I was going to do that. That was it?
I have a follow-up question, Mark. When she speaks with the attorney with the questions that she has, is that, can we bill that back to the developer?
No.
Should we? Okay.
No. No town council plan can be billed to the developer. We can't. Only the peer.
All right.
So with the thing you were going to put back in the agenda though, Kathy, I just sort of remembered. If you could look into, like, we've always talked about, and I don't know how well this process with the peer review, get the price, have the applicant give a check to cover the peer review costs. Where that money goes, does it get used properly? I know Nate had a discussion with me about it. It's something that we need to control. And, and that's also something that if we have an engineering firm help us with a project, that should be part of our checklist or they create a checklist to say, and at the end I need to check out the, the the stormwater drainage. When I get the as-bilts, I'll go out and verify. And that's when we release said bond. And so checklist, checklist for how that gets done and, and also what do we do with that money?
What do we do with it? It's in a special account. That's something actually Nate had spoke to me about trying to set up a, a better system of.
As long as he's talked to you about it too, he talked to me about, I think that we need to be cognizant of that, whether the money get returned, if there's money left over. Or I, I guess I want to talk to him a little bit more about it and maybe the selectmen to see if I'm sure there are going to be shortcomings at some point financially with some of these processes or things that have got missed that we still need reviewed and we didn't get money from an applicant. That will be an ongoing discussion, but as long as we get some information and discuss it at the next meeting. Go ahead, Kathy.
I have a spreadsheet. There's only been a couple of peer reviews, so I keep track of it. But I know that if it's going through multiple departments, sometimes that's where it gets a little tricky, like if planning board wasn't reviewing it and conservation was reviewing it and they had some funds and then we had funds. So I think that the goal is to try to have one account and have like one person or one department monitoring.
Why isn't the information just going with the project number over to our accounting? I mean, if, if the, the expenses should be accounted for on a project basis, so do you have a number assigned to it?
Different boards and lack of communication.
It's a special account though. It's like a, what they call a 53G account. So it's just for, for peer review. Like I said, if you have a project and it's being reviewed by two different boards, that's where it gets a little.
Messy. And so what happens also is, and that's what we're trying to work towards with maybe that list of qualified engineers, is maybe we can get some continuity with the border hall, conservation and the planning board, maybe use the same engineering firm for one project. To streamline, so it's, it's really awful to the applicant if the planning board uses firm A for stormwater and conservation uses firm B instead of using the same exact report. It's not fair to the applicant to bill them twice. Basically the same thing. And then you get those two engineers maybe bickering about Basically the same thing, and then you get those two engineers maybe bickering about who's right and they differed. So that's that's a town thing, that's a, you know, between boards, it's not a necessarily a planning board problem, but it is. A problem. So, you know, I think me as the chair, us as the board, we want to try and communicate with the other boards if we know. A project is coming so that hopefully all boards use the same engineer on one project. And maybe that's something that comes from the Board of Selectmen to say, this is our initiative. The unfortunate thing is I think it'll be a first come, first served, so whichever board gets it first is going to be the one that picks.
Isn't that difficult to try and get each board to agree on using one engineering firm?
Yes, that's why I'm saying it. It's going to either be depicted by the the board that gets the plans first. Or unless the Board of Selectmen. Somehow comes up with uh a a motion to say that this is how the process will be done when boards. Uh you know, different boards look at the same project for different reasons. Uh so it 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 is something that needs to be streamlined, but like I said, it's not a planning board problem per se, but it is a problem.
Then these boards have a comfort level with a certain engineering firm that we may not use.
Right, but we have to all pick a new one now because the one that. Like say, Board of Health was very comfortable with a guy, but he just retired. So someone's going to be picking a new one. Who knows? I mean, maybe it'll just be the same old, same old, but. Even if we could just control the money so that we could disperse properly, that's. That's something important. It's sort of different from picking and choosing an engineer. The advantage to using a sim- same engineer often is applicants get used to what they look for. You know, when I say applicant, an engineer. So if we constantly use one or two engineers to do stormwater. They always know what that guy's going to look for when he reviews their plan, so then they it's streamlines the process and it becomes easier for everybody.
Sure.
So. That being said, I might make the announcement that our next planning board meeting is October eighth at seven o'clock. And I think we've concluded everything that's on the agenda, other than if you have any other secret items on your agenda, Kathy.
I know secrets.
The ones that weren't, didn't make this agenda. So if that's it, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, so. Everybody's in favor, I know it, but.
Aye.
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 Thank you.